Would someone like to make a motion to return to the regular board meeting to public session? Mr. Lemay, second, Mr. Bornstein, is there any discussion? All in favor, proposed eight to zero. I would like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except Mrs. Leatherbarrel. In accordance with Executive Order 202.1, please be advised that members of the public will not be permitted to attend the board meeting in person. This meeting is being conducted as a webinar. The public has had the option to register for this meeting. Mrs. Beeger, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. Consider the world a precious chance, one nation, one ground, we invisible with liberty and justice.
Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Bornstein, second, Mrs. Beeger, discussion, Mr. Lemay?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda as presented and move 11F, the Adopt the 2021 School Reopening Plan. Move that in front of 3A Board acknowledgements.
Okay, so Mr. Lemay is a first, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, eight, zero. So at this time, we are going to have our presentation, Dr. Markzah, on the reopening plan.
You still have to do the actual agenda.
Okay, so is there a motion now to approve the agenda as presented?
You already got that, just take the vote.
So could I have a vote? All in favor? Unanimous, eight, zero. We are now going to have our presentation on the reopening plan. Dr. Markzah?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Van Scis. I want to share with the board and with our school community where we are as it comes to our reopening plan for this coming school year in September of 2020. School is about one month away. And so we have began to put some plans in place that will allow us to open school as much as we possibly can. Oh, this is a picture you might recall seeing on the news recently. It was taken by a student in a high school in Georgia. The student took this picture and posted it on social media. She was then suspended from school, which regardless of the legality of that, as you can see, it shows a crowded hallway with a large number of students in the hall. Not very many of them are wearing masks. So that can be a real concern when it comes to the spread of the virus. It's interesting to note that since this picture was taken, there's been, I believe the number is five students have been diagnosed with COVID and three of the staff members. So it has moved through that particular school to the point where they're talking about closing the school down. They're going to full-time online learning. So that's very concerning when we see things like that as a school district of what we're going to do to prevent the spread of this virus. So it's also interesting to note the filing are still closed. Movie theaters, can't go to the movies, can't go to a gym and work out. You know, that's a real hard one for me. Restaurants and indoor dining have been greatly curtailed. Chicken wings don't count as a meal in Western New York anymore. You look at things like weddings and other celebratory activities, that's not taking place. So while these things are stopped, the governor has said we can go back to school this September. So what types of things have we done so far? We sent out a parent survey on July 1st to gather feedback and data. We established a reopening committee with meetings held on July 15th, 23rd, and 30th. We drafted a plan that was developed and shared with the reopening committee and all school principals on July 30th, 2020. We submitted it to New York State on that same date. We submitted it to the Department of Health yesterday. And we got feedback provided to all parents via WITS mail each week for the past four weeks. And we've established a date for a community forum with the Williamsville Central School District stakeholders. I'll talk more about that a little later. Here are some of the people on the reopening committee. These are the administrators that were part of it. We had a principal from each level. We had our assistant superintendents were part of the group. One of our instructional specialists, our director of facilities, Mrs. Harding, who's here with us this evening, our nurse practitioner. So we had a number of people that took part in the committee from administration. In addition, we had a number of teachers from around the district. And I'm very thankful for their work and their input. They are very positive and helpful and solution focused throughout the time we met together. They really did a terrific job of collaborating with us to bring about our draft plan. We also had a number of parents. These are the parents. The parents were chosen mostly at random. There were a few specific choices based on the fact that we wanted to make sure we had parents from different schools across the district. In other words, we didn't want all the high school parents to be the parents of North High School or East High School or South High School. We wanted some from each. So we wanted to balance that out. We wanted to get some diversity in our parent group and also bringing on board parents who might have a child who has special needs or other specific things related to their learning that we thought were important to be brought to the forefront. What were our goals with developing a reopening plan? It's important to realize this sometimes gets lost in all the talking about our plan is that we want to maximize the health and safety of students and staff as they return to school in September 2020. That's what we're looking to do. We cannot guarantee anyone's safety. We can't even guarantee our own safety. But we can take affirmative steps to make it safer for everybody. And that's our goal in all of this is what are those affirmative steps that would allow that to happen? And then the second thing is we want to inform our stakeholders of the steps we're taking to make a safer environment for students and staff and communicate those with our stakeholders so that they understand what's going to happen, why it's going to happen, how it ended up like this and not like that, or whatever the case may be. So we are in the process right now of having those conversations. Please know everyone that a return to school does not mean a return to normalcy. I think one could argue in our school community, like any school community in America, everyone just wants to get back to normal life. That's not going to happen anytime soon. Normalcy is going to look different, it's going to feel different. There's going to be different expectations and responsibilities for our administrators, for our teachers, our students, our parents. All that has to come into play to make sure we are doing things and keeping people as safe as possible. Some reopening guidance documents, these aren't the active links. We do have active links on our website. Feel free to look at those. I think this all adds up to about 4,000 pages of documents that we all read very closely to make sure we are doing exactly what we're supposed to do. But at any rate, I say that tongue in cheek. But there is a great deal of information out there. And some of it, by the way, doesn't always support each other. Some of it is sometimes giving different information. So on health and safety, there's got to be a health screen with a daily temperature check done at home. So parents need to check their child's or children's temperatures, check their health, and report it to the school through WITS. So we're putting an opportunity on WITS to be able to do this. We anticipate there will be a large number of people that don't do it because they either forgot, they got busy, they got sidetracked, they were running late. You could fill in the blank with lots of different reasons. And if that's the case, we then, when children get to school, need to assess their temperature and assess their health. So we will be ready to do that. We are providing additional hand and respiratory hygiene products for staff and students at all of our schools. We want to make sure that people have what they need to protect themselves. We want to make sure we have good student, parent, and staff education and communication. And that needs to be ongoing with updates, reminders, things of that nature. And then social distancing protocol. This is probably one of the most important ones to talk about this evening. Students need to be six feet apart, okay? If they're in a music or a phys ed class, for example, they're supposed to be 12 feet apart. I don't know where 12 feet came from. I'm guessing it's double six feet. And somebody thought that would be a lot of distance and that's why they made the rule. I don't know. I doubt there's any reasonable studies that show that 12 feet is the magical number for those particular classes. So we're going to try very hard to keep kids socially distant. That's going to be a big challenge because there's going to be times when they're not socially distant. It might happen on the bus, it might happen in cafeteria, it might happen in the hallway, could happen in the gym, class, a lot of different places it could happen. But we want to make that something very important. The other thing the Board of Education should know about this is you will get approached by people who say that "South High School is not abiding by the social distancing protocol. Here's a picture of my child and their friend in the hallway. You notice they're less than six feet apart." You're going to get hit with things like that. And they're going to say, "What are you going to do about it?" We're going to remind people, we're going to try to educate people. We're going to try to reinforce, everyone has a new responsibility in this. If it comes down to it and we have to go a discipline route, we'll do that. But that's not our intention and that's not where we're looking to go. So just know that when we go into this. The same thing with face covering protocol. This is one that I've been very direct with our principals about. If there's one thing you're going to be strict on, it's going to be the face covering protocol. There should not be random mask breaks throughout the day. There should not be kids wearing a mask half on, half off, or a mask with, and one employee in district office got a mask with a bunch of holes in it. Those things just aren't going to help anyone, they're not going to protect anyone. We need to be responsible with that. So that's an issue that will be addressed by administrators and by teachers. And students need to comply and not be insubordinate, or they may face disciplinary action. Personal protective equipment protocol. We are giving some of our staff face shields depending on what their role is in the school. Our daily cleaning protocol has been enhanced. It's going to include not just cleaning, but also disinfecting so that our schools are disinfected every single day. And that's critically important as well. Now, there is some questions about school closure, return to school, notification when there's a sick student or staff member, and contact tracing. Those are all being reviewed right now. We are going to involve the Erie County Department of Health. But what we're already hearing is they don't have enough staff, enough people to be able to do that for all schools in Erie County. So we're going to need to make sure we have a good plan in place that we can follow through on. And then the next question is, who can we share that with? If someone is sick at middle, middle school, can we share with all the middle, middle school parents and staff that somebody has COVID in their school? Is that giving out too much information? If they can sort of figure out who that person is, it might be. So we need to look at that more specifically and figure out what exactly would be the right thing to do. In school, for students and staff who are medically vulnerable or high risk as defined by the New York State Education Department, those parents, if they're uncomfortable with their kid coming to school, will be able to ask the district to provide full-time online education, okay? And we will provide that. We have not made any final determinations on whether or not it will be through GOCs for grade seven through 12. That was our initial thinking. However, we are reconsidering that right now. And we'll make that final determination hopefully by the end of this week and share that information out with parents and families. So moving forward, we are going to go to a hybrid instruction model so that students are going to be engaged in school. There'll be an A group Monday and Tuesday, last names A through L. B group Thursday and Friday, M through Z. C group is four days a week for students who are English as a second language. And D group, students who are in a special class, will be Monday through Friday. However, we are considering, I believe Mr. Skins is all adjusting that a little bit. We may, so we may adjust the D group, for example. So these are the last names I just gave you. It's important to know because you're going to be asked this question by parents and community members. If your last name is Apple and you're in school Mondays and Tuesdays, what happens on Thursdays and Fridays? Will you get online learning? The answer is no, okay? You won't at this time. You will get online learning on Wednesdays, okay? So on Wednesdays, the idea is teachers will give all of their students some online instruction. When they're not in school, they're going to be going to have to be working on assignments, projects, research, things of that nature for their classes going forward. So there's the C group of students. And there's the group D students. You may get asked in the community members of the board, "Why is it only self-contained classes? What about my child who has ADHD? What about my child who, you know, can't concentrate? Or my child who has this issue or that issue?" You're, you're going to get asked that. And I guess the best answer is we have to draw the line somewhere. Where we decided to draw the line is let's have all of our students in our self-contained classes get more support, more structure, and more help going forward. So what if their parents decide to keep their child out of school? Case X, we'll be providing more information on this in the coming weeks. Same thing in seven through 12. Again, we have not made a final determination about GOCs yet. But once we make that determination, we're going to share this out with parents. Hopefully this week, we give parents about a week's time to pick whether or not they want their child to be in an online learning situation all the time. So some of our next steps, we're going to continue professional development opportunities for all teachers. One of the questions I get asked is, "How do we know if we go to online learning again? It won't be like it was in mid-March." And my answer to that is we provided a lot of professional development since then so that people can be successful in what we're asking them to do to educate our children. We're going to continue to evaluate and comply with additional changes to the school reopening plan. And this is important for the community to know. When Governor Cuomo made his announcement on Friday that we had to do testing protocols for COVID and that we had to do contact tracing for COVID, that had not been shared up to that point. That was a change that happened on Friday. We as school leaders heard about it at the same time all of New York State heard about it. So it's hard to plan and say, "Yeah, we already have that done" because we heard about it last, I don't know, on Tuesday or Wednesday, when you don't know what those changes are. So we anticipate there will be last-minute adjustments going forward. We're also going to consider any rational adjustments to our plan before the start of school. This plan is a working document, it's not a final plan. We did submit it to New York State and the Department of Health, but that does not mean that it can't and it won't change. We have to do the best plan for our school community that's going to keep our students and staff as healthy and safe as possible. We're also going to hold some community meetings next week, starting on Monday, going through Thursday. Monday will be for all elementary school parents. It's 6:00 PM through Zoom, and we'll get those links out to our parents and community soon. Middle school will be on Tuesday, high school on Wednesday. And teachers and staff members, we will meet with them on Thursday at 6:00 PM through Zoom to update them on the plan, what we're doing, where things are heading, answer questions, things of that nature. So this concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions from the board.
So yeah, what we will do right now is, I believe each board member has some questions that they would like to ask. So we will start going left to right. Mr. Mecca, if you would like to start?
Sure, thanks. I'm impressed that the district has been so nimble and able to adapt so fast and put together plans for the coming school year with such, on such a short, within such a short period of time. I was a little disappointed yesterday to find out that we were one of the 107 school districts that had not submitted a plan because of the SNAP move not forwarding to the State Department of Health. Unfortunately, that's, that's not something that's going to hold us up in any respect. So I'm happy, happy that that's not going to affect us in any negative way. It seems reading the plan that meals will continue to be served in the cafeteria. Is this a correct assumption on my side?
Yes, it is.
Thanks. There have been concerns raised by parents in the past that all schools do not have school nurses all the time. The plan has contingencies for when a school nurse is not present. Is there anything the district can do to ensure that a school nurse is in the building at all times?
Yeah, we've looked at this issue a couple of times over the last five or six years. And one of the things that we added was the use of a staffing agency so that when we don't have a nurse available or nurse calls in sick, we're able to use a staffing agency nurse to come in to help make sure there's not some situation where we're not fulfilling a need. That can still be challenging because there, even with that, there could be times when we still need someone. And then the other option is our nurse practitioner, Mrs. Harding, may be assigned as a nurse for a short period of time to help out a specific school on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you. I'm concerned about curriculum extension, teachers traveling from room to room. If they become infected, they will spread the virus around to many different groups of students. Are there any possible alternatives to this that the reopening team may have considered or might consider?
Not really. We're more concerned with the health of the students. So we did, we were trying to set up a scenario where students are moving less, not anymore. And that's why that decision was made.
Thank you. The plan doesn't talk about altered school schedules and traveling around the school buildings. Will there, will there be any accommodations made to alter school schedules to minimize traffic in the hallway so that we don't see pictures like we saw there from, I think that was Georgia?
Yeah. There may be some changes to the schedules, but I think all in all, the better way to approach that is for each school to develop their own rules. Walk down the right side of the hallway, walk up those stairs, down the other stairs, things of that nature to help keep kids apart as much as possible.
Okay. And I think you mentioned that. Given the critical windows of language learning that exist in early elementary grades, did the reopening committee get any consideration to prioritizing in-person instruction to early elementary students? I'm concerned that this pandemic is going to create a pandemic of reading problems among early elementary students.
Yeah, it could. We could end up with a pandemic of reading problems for elementary students. At our first meeting with our committee, I told our committee, "I'm not interested in a hybrid plan." And the reason, the biggest reason I wasn't interested in it is I really think it puts parents in a difficult predicament. How do you go to work and watch your second grader and fourth grader at home while they attempt to learn, you know, online on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, or Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, whatever the case may be? But then a ruling came out from the State Education Department that said not only should students wear a mask, but they also need to be six feet of social distancing between them. So there was no way to do that with a full class. And the other option would be to hire a lot more teachers, but then you're going to run into space issues where you put everybody from a space standpoint. So we really didn't travel too far down that road.
Given that there may be learning regression due to the previous closure and the current circumstances, is there any specific plan to help bring students up to a grade level? For example, will there be any specific professional development for teachers helping prepare for this?
Yeah, we've already started that process, I think in the spring and throughout the summer. And then if you recall, on Wednesdays, we're going to have professional development for part of the day. So that'll be one of the areas we want to focus on. Obviously, early on, we're going to be focused on the adjustment in online learning and how to do it well, and communication and things like that. But from there, there's going to be other opportunities for different kinds of professional development.
Okay, and sorry about all the questions, but I think these are important issues in difficult times for everyone. Can parents shift between virtual and in-person instruction if they choose to? Or if they're not satisfied with the model that they chose?
Yeah, I think I mentioned that. We're not going to make people commit to full-time online learning like for a semester or a school year. You can move your child in and out whenever you want.
Okay, sorry if I missed that.
That's okay.
Well, thank you very much. I know it's difficult for the team to come up with a plan, but I think we're doing the best we can in these circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Mecca. Mr. Lemay?
I'm going to ask just a couple of questions around health guidelines and stuff like that. Current proposal on the table is that we're going to, we're going to allow, excuse me, we're going to trust and rely on the parents to take the temperature of their students and of staff to take their own temperatures in the morning prior to coming in?
Correct.
Has there been any consideration to do some sort of second tier monitoring, whether it be cameras at main entrances or something along those lines?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
So we are doing a second then, tier?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not relying on just the parents or the students?
No, I didn't really want to say that tonight because parents will hear that and then not do it. We want them to, to help us and be part of that solution. But no, we will also have temperature scanners at our entrances. And we'll also follow up with students who do not get a health report submitted on WITS by their parent so that we can make sure that they're healthy and safe to be in school.
Good, good. I know it's difficult at this time to talk about it. Can you talk any more about the safety measures regarding busing? What, at least you're looking at at this point to make busing safe for, for students?
Yeah, we want to keep kids socially distant, distant, distance? Thank you. Distance on the bus as much as possible. And we also are saying that when you get on the bus, you have to wear a mask. And if the child doesn't have a mask, then we're going to provide them with a mask from the bus driver when they get on the bus. So you should not see in a school, for example, kids getting off the buses with no masks on because they should have gotten one on the bus and put it, put it on. And if they're not cooperating with that, then we're going to have to deal with that from a disciplinary standpoint at one point in time. But that's what we'll be looking to do to keep kids safe on the bus.
And I did hear in the presentation that masks are going to be required at all times without breaks. It seemed a little difficult with elementary students. Is there any thought processes to how that's going to be effective?
I don't think I said without breaks, I could be wrong. But you have to wear a mask. We will build in break times for people to get a break from their mask. I just don't want, if we're all teachers at this table right here, I don't want Mark's class to have three kids on mask break, Sean's class to have two kids on mask break, and so on. And then nobody knows who's supposed to be doing one. And then nobody knows who's supposed to be doing one. So the best way to prevent that is to define a time or times during the day. Maybe it's the first five minutes of a class period. Maybe it's the last five minutes of a class period. Whatever it is, it must take a mask break then. And everybody in class takes it at the same time. And then we go from there. But I think that's the cleanest way to do it and the way to make sure kids are taken seriously.
My last question is, it's the doozy question. And I know you're probably waiting to talk to Erie County Department of Health on this, but what happens when, when say a student in a classroom is tested positive or the teacher in the classroom is tested positive? What are we looking at as protocols at this point? Are we going to, you know, going to quarantine the whole class? Are we? There's many spins of this, so what's the district looking at at this point?
So every situation is different. Erie County Department of Health just recently changed this. It used to be if you're around someone for 10 minutes, then they've been exposed and they need to be quarantined. Now it's 15 minutes. Why it went from 10 to 15, again, I don't know. It's arbitrary numbers. But at any rate, that's what would happen in terms of quarantining everybody in a class or everyone in the school. It's just very difficult to predict without knowing the specific circumstances of how long that student spent around other students or other staff. Were they within six feet? Were they not within six feet? Did they have a mask on, did they not have their mask on, coughed on somebody? I mean, there's just a lot of different specifics to look at that will decide that. It may come down with one student or staff getting sick and we may have to close the whole school for a period of time. We're not sure yet, but we will make that decision in conjunction with Erie County Department of Health and our medical professionals. So it's the best decision possible to try to keep everyone as safe as possible.
Am I correct to also reference that we're also somewhat battling HIPAA privacy laws, are we not? In the sense that we can't disclose when people have been infected, et cetera, et cetera, because of the way HIPAA laws are written?
Well, that's part of the, part of that equation. Part of that question is what can you express and what can you not express? If I told you we had someone in this room who has COVID, and you all know that Mark walked out coughing and gagging after ninth period class, and you could easily triangulate that it was him, then maybe we shouldn't say what we said because now everybody knows it's him. And we're not looking to violate anyone's confidentiality. So that's going to be the balancing act. Mrs. Harding, you want to say anything else about that?
Sure. Want me to move to the podium or?
Yeah, sure.
Well, I don't know how many people know that we have always had a very close relationship with Erie County Department of Health. There is a team of epidemiologists that we work closely with with any contagious disease. So COVID is not anything new with respect to contagious disease protocols that we have followed. We've done so for things like pertussis, whooping cough, for example. So we always work very closely. I'm usually the contact person with the epidemiology department at the local ECDOH. And what we would do is work with them to investigate the case, the situation, and assist with contact tracing. And as Dr. Mertzloff pointed out, there are so many variables. How long the infected person that we're dealing with, how long were they with other people closer than six feet? How long were they with that person? What happened in school, but what happened outside of school? Who were they hanging out with? So all of those things would factor into, you know, our next steps. But we always worked very closely with them. So we would also work with them on whoever needed to get tested. So that is something that we would definitely be doing for any situation. In terms of notification, we would notify based on the recommendations. Obviously, if anybody needed to be quarantined, that would come out with the contact tracing, identifying those people that would need to be quarantined, and they would be notified because they'd have to spend time under quarantine. So we would definitely do all our efforts in conjunction with the Department of Health.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lord. Mrs. Kuzmerik-Babman? Yes, Dr. Mertzloff, thank you so much for putting this presentation together and for providing some more of the details tonight. I do have a few questions. One of them is related to the online versus hybrid. You said that you'll have more details regarding the online instruction. Will that include all the coursework that will be available online so that when parents have to make a decision, it will be informed?
Yes, our goal will be for parents to be able to make an informed and educated choice. And I don't think they can do that if they don't know which courses are going to be offered and which courses will not be offered. So we're going to provide that to them upfront so that they can make that choice. It might not be a choice they would like to make or want to make, but we want to be upfront and honest about what we're able to offer as a school district.
And related to that, if people were to choose the hybrid for the seventh through 12th grades, are you looking at grouping students in any way to minimize contacts with other student groups? I know there's been some talk in the media about that.
Help me understand the question letter, please.
So that instead of a normal class schedule where you're moving from classroom to classroom to classroom as you normally would, will there be any grouping of students so that there's more cohorts for certain?
Well, you can do cohorts in the elementary school level, but it becomes much more problematic at the middle and high school because there are specific courses, particularly when you get into seventh grade and going on from there into high school where you have kids who'll be taking advanced courses or other kids taking, you know, courses that might be a bit more basic. Whatever the case may be, it's all over the place. So it's really hard to control who's with who. You might be an advanced math student, but you know, you don't read very well or write very well, so you need extra support. It could be all over the place. So while we'd love to be able to do that, I don't see in real life that working out very well.
So you see if you choose the hybrid at that level, it will be following a normal class schedule, like you would normally?
I do, yes.
That's all the questions.
Great. Dr. McCleary?
Actually, most of the questions that I was going to ask have been talked about either here or in the presentation, so I'll ask for them. Thank you.
Mrs. Beaker?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. One of my questions has to do with what the shift in the instructional model will look like. And I try to look for silver linings and these dark clouds. And we've heard feedback, at least I've heard feedback in the past from families that have wanted a shift from just a lecture-style instruction to something more project-based. Now that we're talking about this hybrid model, I've heard that word being thrown around that there will be more of like a project-based model where some of the instruction comes Monday, Tuesday, and then the students will continue some work independently. My question is, I've heard about professional development for online learning and really using those technology tools. Will there be professional development available for teachers regarding that kind of shift in instruction? So it's not just like worksheets coming home, but really meaningful work for those kids on the days that they won't be in school?
Yes, there will be. We have given that sort of professional involvement in the past as well. But I think anytime we can do that and enhance what we're doing, enhance what our teachers are able to provide for our students, which puts a project-based learning, I think is very important. So we will make those efforts.
Right. Similar question about the social-emotional learning in that aspect. We know that the world has changed so much since March, the last time we sat here at this table. And kids are going to be coming from a place, some new to school for the first time as kindergartners. How are we preparing our teachers for not just the academic, but that social-emotional connection as well to ensure, even though they're socially distant, that there's ways that they can keep kids engaged and happy as well?
That's a big challenge because what we're looking to do in school runs exactly opposite of what we've tried to do in school for every other school year and every other school year. But we have done training and we are bringing some people in before the start of the school year to help and assist our teachers to be able to do this. So we think that will be helpful and will help our kids from a social-emotional learning standpoint as well.
Glad to hear that. Thank you. The last piece is just a comment. You know, as board members, we're tasked with representing the community and we've been really lucky to receive a lot of feedback from our community around this course. Like it's such an important topic to all of us with children. It's hard to represent our community as a whole when our community is just so divided on this. And it's for the same reason that we differentiate with kids, we have families with different needs. And so, you know, some families have been asking for five days a week. Some families have been saying, don't go back to school at all. And everything in between. And so I just want to express my appreciation to the committee that met to try to help bridge and really represent different groups of people that have different needs for their families. We know that it's not perfect. But I'm grateful for those taking their time to try to put together what they feel is best for our kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Beaker. I think one of the things I forgot to mention is our committee talked about getting together again shortly after the start of the school year to do a check-in and see how is it going? What other supports are needed? What do we need to focus on? How do we make this smoother for everybody? Things of that nature. So I think that'll be a critical piece to the follow-up as well.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Biscala?
First, I just wanted to thank the reopening committee. It's not an easy task, which you guys did. Obviously, it can be a hundred many times in many districts. You can't make everyone happy. It's just the nature of the beast and it's kind of where we're at as a country right now. So I just wanted to thank you all for that. I guess one of the questions that just kind of popped up, so you didn't mention, a lot of the questions were asked before, but one of the questions that I have, you mentioned that if you are a hybrid model, let's say you go to school on Monday and Tuesday, you'll only get virtual work on Wednesday, not Thursday and Friday?
Correct.
Is there a situation where kids may take projects home or different ways to have them working on Thursday and Fridays so they're not sitting idle?
Absolutely. I just wanted to be clear about it from a student and parent standpoint of what they could expect. I don't want them expecting, you know, on Thursday, Friday, October, the teacher isn't connecting online with my child. Well, the reason they're not is they're teaching other kids who are physically in their classroom, and they can't do both at the same time. So that's why.
Which is understandable. I just want to make sure, because as we mentioned before, a lot of parent concerns, reading, math, especially at the younger ages. I'm happy to hear that they'll at least have something to do on those days, which I know our family members know value. And another question. When we talk about the reopening committee, I know there's many members on it. There was some writing given by MICE and the New York State Education Department where certain community members and different local health and healthcare providers and affiliate organizations should be involved in the reopening committee. So I guess I have to ask, why did we limit it to so many, not so many parents? We limited to not very many teachers. We limited it to where, when we look at the reopening committee, we didn't even have a counselor or a social worker or a psychologist. The reason I ask that is those are the ones that really connect to the social-emotional learning aspect. And I think if we had those types of people on the committee, it might have shined a light or a different direction or thoughts and encouraged discussions on different type of plans that could have been laid out, not just a hybrid model. Well, it would have been a hybrid model no matter what, but you know, just different thoughts and discussion. So I guess I'm kind of asking, why was, why you chose so little of those members, stakeholders, and so many?
Please say those members are for?
So like parents, teachers. If you count, other districts had many different teachers of all different aspects, many different parents of different age levels and things like that.
I think if you have too many people on a committee, it slows down the work, you don't get the work done. There's voices in the room sort of drowned out the progress, so to speak. So that's one reason. I think another thing is trying to find people that were available and free on three different days and due until late July is sometimes a challenge. But we weren't trying to keep anyone off of the committee. We wanted their input. We valued their input. And like I said earlier, I told the committee on the first day, I don't want to do hybrid instruction. I'm a parent of three children in the district as well. I don't want to do it. It puts me in, as a parent, in a bad place. But given the rules, we have to follow the rules and regulations and laws of New York State. We had to go in this direction. So it's my hope at some juncture that we can transition to full-time learning with kids in school, five days a week, full-time, all day long. But I think it's going to be at least five to six months before that happens.
Yeah, I agree. It's a tough situation. So certainly that's all I had right now. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Borancey?
Thank you. I'd also like to add my thanks to Dr. Mertzloff for the work that went into putting this reorganization reopening plan together. Thanks to the committee that you assembled. Also, thanks to the many, many community members we've heard from in the last week or so helping us to understand what's happening in our community so that we can make good valuable judgments. So this is Tuesday, August 11th, and the reopening plan has just been presented to us. But to some extent, it feels like three-dimensional chess where pieces are needing to be moved in every direction all the time. To what extent should we prepare ourselves for alternate reopening plans, say if the state government changes some of their guidance to us and to you going forward, which is a distinct possibility?
Yeah, I think if I could predict that and answer it with any sense of certainty, I'd probably have a different, much more high-paying job than the one I have because that's difficult to predict. You don't know what the governor might decide next or what might be decided by the CDC or the New York State Department of Health, Erie County Department of Health, or whoever some of the major players are in this decision-making process, we don't know. But if that happens, we'll be ready to adjust. I said to the committee multiple times, the facts change every day. You know, and that's not to say that is a bad thing, but they would change all the time. And until you get the latest set of facts, how do you make a decision? How do you share out this decision? You don't want to share out something that isn't going to last or is going to change anyway. So we have to wait until it settles down and we get the facts and we release our plan. So that's a hard one.
We should kind of remain open to changes as the environment changes on us.
Yeah, I think we're all going to remain open, right? Tomorrow night, I'm probably going to hear from quite a few parents and community members and educators and everything else. And if there's something that makes sense to make a change to this plan, we'll give it due consideration. If it's not, then we move forward. I think we have the best plan that we can have right now, given all the circumstances. There's parts about it I don't like, that I don't want, that I would rather change, but we can't. So.
Thank you. That's all that needs. Thanks.
Thank you. So Dr. Mertzloff, I just have one question. I think a lot of the questions were answered that I had myself. Just hearing, I think a lot of parents, we've already received some emails. And I think a concern parents will have is on the off days of the cohorts, while they're at home receiving that online learning, is there not an option to do synchronous instruction? As some have pointed out, that other districts are potentially going to do that.
Yeah, we've discussed that possibility. We're not we're not committed to that right now. Our concern is if you're going to do synchronous, you're going to have a camera in a classroom. The camera's not going to move. It's going to be on one device. You're going to have students maybe working in small groups at different times. How does that happen? With kids that are at home in their bedroom? With kids that are at home in their bedroom, we just had a lot of questions about it. They gave us more concern than the answers that would come about um as the positives of actually doing. Um will I say we definitely won't change that? No. But we'd have to really be convinced that that was a better route for our school districts.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So in compliance with open meetings law, this meeting agenda was posted last week Thursday. This was also the day that Governor Cuomo gave updated information to districts about school reopening with the directive to hold three parent meetings before the end of the month. Eleven F is listed as an action item on the agenda. At this time, is there a motion, please, to postpone the approval of the district reopening plan until the end of the month? So that three parent meetings and one staff meeting may take place before we as a board vote to adopt the reopening plan. Mr. Castella, is there a second? Mr. Mecca, discussion? All in favor? United as well, eight zero. So we are now going to go back. We are at three recognition. Uh are there any board acknowledgements? I would just like to do one acknowledgement, even though we just discussed it. Really to extend our sincerest appreciation to the reopening committee. This has been a massive undertaking. It is more than any, I think, anyone has realized. And I appreciate it because you have had the task of trying to be creative, needing to be equitable, and then creating a safe plan um for all of our students. So really, I just felt that separately, I needed to acknowledge and thank you all very, very much. We are now going to go into public. Yes, Mr. Le. Sorry.
I uh I wanted to uh kind of send out a thanks to uh most of the community, actually, staff, administration, teachers, parents, students. Uh I know this has been anything but the average summer. Uh you know, as a my my wife being a teacher, I've seen the stress that she's gone through all summer long trying to help her district figure out what they're going to do and how they're going to do it and and whatnot. Um and certainly, parents this entire summer have been stressing over what it's going to look like going back to school and all of that stuff. So I know there's no perfect plan, but I did want to say, you know, send out a acknowledgement, thanks to everybody for their patience and understanding and and whatnot and and you know, trying to move forward with whatever the district and the state does eventually come up with, so.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have more acknowledgement? Okay, thank you. We will now move into public expression. Dr. McCleary, would you please read the board's public expression statement? Welcome to all who have registered to observe this regular Zoom board meeting. For policy fifteen ten, the board has set aside thirty minutes for public expression. A time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. Because it is slightly different with Zoom. At two and a half minutes, you will be notified that you have thirty seconds remaining. I will kind of raise my hand and Mrs. Raddis will turn on my mic and I will say, you have thirty more seconds. At three minutes, I will again interrupt and thank you for your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. We would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. And thank you for your cooperation. At this time, those of you who have pre-registered for public expression, could you please raise your hand electronically if you have plans that you would like to be called upon to speak? I will call on you and if there's time allowed, I will call on those interested in addressing the board, perhaps after they've heard the people who have already registered. Given me, our first speaker is Deborah Mahaney. If Ms. Mahaney acknowledged that she is interested in speaking.
Hello?
Ms. Mahaney?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name for the record and we got you. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Deborah Mahaney. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Hello and thank you for the time. I've been teaching at East High School for twenty-three years. I'm a Flames alumni. My daughter is also a graduate from East. My heart is all about the kids. I advise many clubs and been honored to speak at three graduations. You may know me as the person who wears a turkey costume for food drives or dressing up for virtual spirit days to show my pride. Currently, due to the coronavirus, we are all dealing with more stressors and frustrations due to this global pandemic. But that said, everyone has a breaking point, even myself, dealing with stress and anxiety for my own well-being and that of my loved ones. Please know, I want to teach my students this coming school year. I am just one voice of many others that have anxiety due to this virus that has overtaken our world. I often tell my students I cannot teach them to lead if I don't make an effort to lead myself. I cannot teach them how to overcome obstacles if I have not overcome some obstacles myself. I cannot teach them passion for learning if I do not have the passion myself. I request that district leaders allow accommodations for teachers that have personal or family with high risk health issues or other concerns to teach in person and be allowed to teach remotely. Compromise, fairness, and equity needs to be provided to all Williamsville family stakeholders. Please don't require people to choose between their loved one and their job. If students have the option to learn remotely, then teachers should be given the same consideration. I understand that grades K through six families who choose remote learning are going to be taught by Williamsville teachers. And I just heard that possibly that grade level seven through twelve will also have that same option because you're not possibly, if you're going to still use BOSI's. But I feel that grade seven through twelve students that choose remote education, that they should be allowed to be taught by their Williamsville teachers. We in Williamsville should unite and look out for each other, create our own virtual learning classroom. We have the expertise, the knowledge, the capabilities, and the technology. And therefore, we could retain our teachers and keep consistency for our students and families. Our students deserve teachers who they are familiar with and depend on. As a district, we need to be compassionate and open minded to find ways that would accommodate everyone. I want to teach but have some personal concerns stepping into the building. When schools shut down this spring, I gave my best effort to make virtual learning meaningful, purposeful, and educational. For those students that need a special help, I would Zoom after school hours around the weekend to accommodate their schedule. I was there for them. I spent June providing professional development to my colleagues and I plan to share more this coming year. I've created helpful videos for my students to make them more comfortable and equipped to be successful in the year.
Excuse me, you have thirty more seconds.
Okay. If you know me, you know I'm a positive, fair, and innovative and team player. I'm looking to district leaders to give teachers the same options you are allowing students in regards to their education. This year is going to be, look different, feel different, and be different. Society and the way life is different. Take into consideration everyone's concerns and needs. Ben Franklin once said, "Tell me and I forget. Teach me and I remember. Involve me and I learn." Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaney. The next person requesting to speak is Jing Zhang. We will move on to the next name. Deborah Rogers. The next name is Colleen Norris. Katie Dunlap. Shannon Budin.
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and then you may begin your comments.
My name is Shannon Budin, B U D I N. And uh the statement that I would like to provide to the board um is related to instructional and pedagogical aspects of uh the remote teaching experience. Um because we do know that there's so many um high impact as well as empirically validated practices that can work well in remote instructional environments. Um I wanted to state something positive and then um pose a thought that the I would like the board to consider. Um one is that on a social media site with over two thousand members of the Williamsville community, it's not a sanctioned district site, parent run. Um there were numerous parents who were able to express very positive experiences in their remote teaching um that occurred in the spring. I thought that um when analyzing this data, one of the things that came to the forefront over and over again from elementary to middle to high school with ELL students as well as students with disabilities with it was the aspect that parents overwhelmingly wanted that personal contact in those live meetings with teachers. So those were the things that stood out as very positive in the spring. I know we've heard, um you've probably heard lots of negative things, but those were the things that overwhelmingly parents reported positive. And I know you did you did do a survey, but the the this was a setting where you know, maybe we had um more openness and and um parent conversation. Therefore, I would implore Dr. Marsloff to more seriously consider options for remote synchronous instruction on the two off days. Um it does not have to be the classroom teacher. There are so many wonderful individuals in school buildings that students have daily contact with, creative use of teacher aides, assistants, student teachers. Um other professionals in the building could not necessarily be the ones instructing, but checking in, having that live personal daily contact with students. Um even a check in buddy that might help parents know that, hey, my kid is staying on track for those um assignments that they're trying to do independently. Um I would also like to comment on um the communication that is being um shared is very process oriented. And I think that a lot of parents have questions related to pedagogical aspects of what the remote instruction is going to be. And so um please communicate more information about the curricular and pedagogical aspects of the online teaching. We'd like to know what types of professional development is are going on because that seemed to be probably the biggest roadblock in the spring. And I know there is PD going on, but I think it's important that you communicate what those differences might be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person on the list is Lauren Bloomberg. Next is Patrick Marks. Michelle Leonis. Carol. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Leonis, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. State your name for the record and begin your comments, please.
Michelle Leonis. Um as a concerned parent in the district, I keep hoping for more detailed communication in regards to the reopening plan. Parents realize that the tasks at hand in the last six months have been challenging, to say the least. But we as parents need as much communication as available to help educate our children, to prepare them for what is ahead. Schools currently scheduled to start about four weeks' time. Parents have no details to base any decisions on whether to select the hybrid or remote option. I'm concerned about the timing of responding to concerns and questions and safely reopening the doors in September. I'm hoping the district considers a plan to hold ongoing meetings throughout the school year to gain feedback as the year progresses. Um as a communication professional, I know timing of a message is everything and wonder if Friday afternoons is the best time to send district wide communications. Maybe the district can consider sending communications earlier in the week or maybe even earlier in the day or using social media tags to alert us there are new messages from the district. Um also feel placement of critical information on the district's website could be more prominent. Yesterday, I didn't know where to register for the Zoom meeting. You had to click through five different things and know that someone had to go to board docs to click on the Zoom meeting. The link for tonight's meeting wasn't posted till probably mid morning this morning. Just hoping that you can give parents more notice of these meetings and post the most prominent information more clearly on the district's homepage. Transparency and communication is key to all stakeholders. I realize the pet last last few months have been very difficult. As a parent, I feel more regular and detailed detailed communication can only help all of us during these challenging and unprecedented times. Parents, teachers, and staff deserve better. And most importantly, our kids deserve the quality education we expect in Williamsville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonis. The next scheduled person is Carol Ryder. Rochelle Russo. Julian Gallo. Stacy. Please state your name for the record and you may begin your comments. You're on mute.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry about that.
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Rachel Russo. I am a parent of an incoming elementary school child. Um I guess one of my biggest concerns is after listening to this meeting is learning of the three days of schooling that will actually be done in the two days of independent work. Um as the mother of a young child, I feel that elementary children are a very vulnerable crowd in the sense that the social, mental aspects of school are very important to them. And then expecting children to stay focused at home with or without working parents for an online curriculum is very concerning. And and just in general, as part of the social contract of society, as parents work and children go to school in the physical school, they learn social interpersonal and communication skills that are valuable as their scholastic curriculum. And I feel as you as administrators have a duty to enforce that contract. You have a duty to make sure our children get the education they deserve. And you owe it to us as taxpayers to act in all of our best interests and provide an option for full in-person schooling that many of us want. So I just challenge the district to actually survey parents and see who would opt in for virtual and see who would end up in a full time school because you may find that you will meet the numbers for the six feet social distancing requirement en masse. So I'm just challenging the district to really dig their heels in and roll up their sleeves a little more. I appreciate and I respect the work that you have done. But I expect better from this district. And in order to make change, you have to start somewhere. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Russo.
Excuse me, Dr. McCleary? Uh Michelle Leonis did have her hand raised up and you did call her name a couple people back. So Michelle Leonis?
She did talk. But thank you, Mrs. Carey.
Okay, there her hand is raised. Michelle, would you be able to un raise your? Thank you. And those with their hands raised, if you can un raise your hand at this time. And if there's time left after um the speakers that signed up, we will call on you. Thank you.
The next person listed is Stacy Falcone. Lauren Solenza. Ms. Solenza, if you would stay.
Hi, yes, my name is Lauren Solenza.
Please go ahead.
My name is Lauren Solenza and I am a graduate of Williamsville East. My mother is a fifteen year employee of the district. I was a teacher for eight years myself and now work as a child development specialist and researcher. Most importantly, I am also the parent of a little boy who is set to start kindergarten this fall. Pax is five. He's my oldest, and this will be our first experience with kindergarten. Hax is five. He's my oldest, and this will be our first experience with kindergarten. He thrives on routine, schedules, and normalcy, as most children do. For their brains to function and process new information, they need to know what comes next. This helps them feel safe and secure, which helps them to take in new knowledge. What differentiates older children from a very specific population of K through five students is that older students have begun development of coping skills. There's an overall understanding of what's going on in the world, and while this is very difficult for them, I won't take that away. They built a solid educational foundation in their K through five years. However, our youngest learners do not have these developmental skills. They come from age and life experience, of which they have very little. They have lived the past six months in fear, uncertainty, isolation, and solitude within their family units. I watch my own son's development and mental health deteriorate as he navigates these new COVID waters. And he now spends most nights in my bed because he's too scared to sleep alone. He never did this prior to COVID. If he were to start kindergarten virtually or two days a week, he would have no educational ground to stand on. Probably not enough. It is not developmentally appropriate to ask this of them. Their brain needs to get into a regular schedule in order to experience academic success. Speaking from experience as a pre-K teacher, students who only attended school part-time struggled significantly more in my classroom. They found difficult to remember the schedule, couldn't get into a rhythm of the culture, and didn't pick up academic concepts as quickly as the students who attended full-time. This is my major concern. Additionally, children touch their face at least 10 times more than an adult. By not allowing students to remove their masks during instructional time when they are safely six feet apart is a missed opportunity to make up for some of the development and academic instruction that is overlooked while mask-wearing, and in fact, is encouraging them to fidget with their masks even more. I encourage you to watch a child wear a mask. And I beg of you to reconsider the mandatory mask-wearing 100% of the day and allow for students to remove their masks when socially distant during instructional time so that they can learn to the best of their abilities. Nothing, no student is more important than another, elementary and high school alike. But like most things in life, a strong foundation sets the tone. Do we want this to be the foundation of learning for our children? I certainly do not. I want him to learn how to read and practice socializing with kids of his own age as he navigates this new social world without me. He has learned the structure of a school environment that will carry him down his educational path. Older children know how to do these things, and while all students have much to learn across developmental domains, our young students are at the greatest risk for failure before they've even begun. Mental health awareness is skyrocketing, and I think it's important to consider the inevitable impact of childhood depression, anxiety, obesity, and other mental health issues related to the lack of normalcy and routine for young children due to COVID-19. My plea to a parent, my plea is to you as a parent is this. Consider looking to other district plans such as Orchard Park, which represents a similar town structure and demographic as Williamsville. Or consider allowing the teachers that want to teach remotely match with students that wish to learn remotely. Rather than saying it won't work, let's run the numbers and see if we can make a more reasonable plan. Thank you. I appreciate your time and consideration on this matter.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Nadine Bargnus. Ms. Bargnus, please state your name for the record, and you may begin your comments. And I believe you're on mute. You need to unmute. You should see a little microphone with a line through it. I... Have you tried clicking on the microphone with the line through it? I apologize. Then we're going to go on to the next person, and I can come back to you to see if you've been able to work on the technical difficulties. The next person on the list is Jessica Fish. Philip Oppenheimer. Janice McDaniel. Jenna Monahan. Andrea Alaveto.
Pardon me, Dr. McClary. Philip Oppenheimer did have his hand raised.
Thank you, Mrs. Carey. Mr. Oppenheimer, please state your name for the record and your comments.
Can you hear me right now?
Yes, I can. We can, sorry.
All right, excellent. Philip Oppenheimer. Ready?
Yes, please, go ahead.
All right. The statement "Can't make everyone happy" is really sitting with me. I've worked at Buffalo General through this entire situation, this entire crisis. And for the last six months, I have never heard that. I haven't heard it from the hospital, I haven't heard it from staff, and I haven't heard it from patients. In the midst of the hospital, in the belly of the beast, we have all worked together following restrictions and safety measures to provide quality care. Today, I in fact sat in the office of one of the nurse practitioners, who was a Sweet Home District resident. And we talked about the fact that her district has provided multiple meetings since the beginning of May. That another survey will be sent out by Sweet Home by the 17th to determine if people will opt in or opt out. If 20% choose for full-on or remote, then Sweet Home will go K through five full-time in-person. If not, they're going to go K through two. I have not seen through this district whether or not appropriate numbers, what numbers actually fit in the classrooms. I do not know distance measurements, and I've not seen the possibilities of actually making in-person happen. To not provide that type of data but to ask for some type of commitment from working families to pay another $6,000 per year for daycare is a burden that I think is really unfair. I've heard that you don't want to ask for commitment, but some families have actually committed to private schools based on the current reopening plan. I am pleading with the district to revisit this plan and to truly take into consideration what working parents are facing. Not only in paying almost a double tax rate, but also the responsibility in ensuring the very best education that this district is known for. There's talk about limiting kids' movement and cohort safety, but I don't understand how that could possibly happen if kids are in daycares in other situations and then returning to school. I mean, that alone is broken. 48%, 48% of the community wanted full-time in-person. But yet, two days a week is what's being represented. I am asking for another survey and for more specific data to really let us know what we're dealing with in terms of those that would really choose full-remote versus full-in-person. Without such data, I think we're just flying in space and hoping for the best, and that's not what our district is based upon. At least not what I hope for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheimer.
Dr. McClary, I do have Jessica Fish is in to speak.
Aye.
If she would raise her virtual hand. Also, I see Jessica's not raising her hand. How about Carol Ryder?
Yes, I did call her name earlier. Is she available at this point?
I see her in the meeting. I don't know if she raises her virtual hand, she'll be able to speak at this time. Carol? Nope. Okay, continue down the list. Thank you, Dr. McClary.
We have approximately five minutes left of our original 30 minutes. But based on what we seem to be seeing, I believe we only have about five more people. So I'm assuming it's all right with the board to continue to hear this last few people? Or can I make a motion or ask for a motion? Okay. The next person is Jen Inkland. Stephen Davis. Mr. Davis?
Yep, I'm here.
Great. State your name for the record, please, and begin your comments.
Thanks. Well, first of all, I realize that the 11F agenda has been pushed, but I'm going to read my original statement anyway, as if it was going to be proceeded in the original order. I'd like to wholeheartedly request that the school board it's a consensus of my parenting peers that the plan is ineffective and will cause undue hardship for many. Further, on Friday, August 7th, the Williamsville School District announced a public forum, which will be held on Wednesday, August 12th, to discuss the reopening plan. Unbeknownst to many parents who received the message, the Williamsville School District intended for the board to adopt. And to date, the Williamsville schools have not held the public discussion on this topic, and I find that unethical. I urge the school board to investigate the composition of the reopening committee. I urge the school board to consider the effects of privilege and bias as part of the plan. I urge the school board to leverage Williamsville's bountiful resources in the interest of our education system. I urge the school board to agree to trade-offs in order to accomplish. I urge the school board to question the quality and underdevelopment of the current hybrid model. And lastly, I urge the school board to be transparent on negotiations relating to collective bargaining agreements in regard to salary, benefits, and conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We are now at our 30 minutes. Is there a motion to continue public expression? For the last probably four or so people. Second. Mr. Speaker? We will finish up the list then. Thank you. The next person is Kristen Napoli. Michelle Kovar. Shana Kotzin. Ms. Kotzin?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You may state your name for the record and you may begin your comments.
Yes, my name is Hannah Kotzin, K-O-T-Z-I-N. I'm a high school parent of a student entering 12th grade and a student who has been raised almost exclusively within the Williamsville Central School District. Thank you for your time and for your work. I appreciate that more information will be forthcoming for the 100% online option that has been discussed. Listening to what has been said already this evening in board comments and questions and by Dr. Martzloff, it seems that the full-time online system versus hybrid model is still, you know, under discussion. But from those comments, it does still seem that there would be two classes of students. Those that can be attached directly to their Williamsville school family and with a full option of courses and known Williamsville School District teachers who they've got to know over the years, and those who may be actually separated from them with a virtual program that may not be equitable and with different options, lesser options, perhaps no AP, perhaps no language options, music, it's unclear. And I do realize that it has been stated that that information may be forthcoming. And particularly, if the both these options is still on the table, then it's really unclear as to the types of teachers that students might have access to. However, I mean, if there's an outbreak, the Williamsville School District will have to be prepared to go to a wholly distant learning option if the schools close. And would they be going to that reduced, seemingly reduced-sounding schedule that's going to be the virtual model? Just from the comments that you've been making this evening or hinting at. And then therefore a lesser model than what we would be getting if we brought our kids into the hybrid model. So my comments really relate to the priorities that are going to be given to the options available for the online 100% online version of a Williamsville education versus a hybrid system.
Excuse me, I have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah, she's all set. Dr. McClary?
Next person is Bryant Tyson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. State your name for the record, please, and you may begin your comments.
Thank you. My name is Bryant Tyson. I am a father of a blended family. We have two different last names, one that's scheduled to go on Monday, Tuesday, and one that's scheduled to go on Thursday, Friday. And this is unfortunately quite a sticky situation. So hopefully you guys will make accommodations so that families like mine can move both children to the same set of days so that we don't have to juggle two different schedules. Additionally, I haven't heard anything mentioned about how lunch for recess is going to happen. Whether they're going to be having lunch at their desks, whether they'll have any recess at all, or whether they'll just need to go and be learning constantly. My third point is one about what if the school system just needs to shut down and we need to go to complete remote learning. It sounds like some of your teachers have had the opportunity to do some professional development but may not have done it. And I'm concerned personally about how many students are, how many teachers are actually ready to go complete remote learning. Because to be frank, the experience when this all happened in March, April, May was below expectations. And given how well this thing spreads, I can easily see this going to a complete remote learning situation. And I would prefer that our children do not suffer in the process if we have to make that shift. The fourth point, last but not least, is that you guys seem to be focused on new learning rather than retention. So if students are learning Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday, or if they're learning Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they're not really getting the attention to retain that knowledge, from what I've heard throughout the week. So it would basically be left up to them to kind of figure it out, or to us to help them figure it out. And that's not really optimal when none of us are teachers. So you don't seem to have any time set aside for like office hours, for example, like Q and A, where the students can ask follow-up questions and basically reinforce the knowledge that they've learned during their section of their two days in school. So just my 30 seconds, got it? Just real quick, four points, blended families' last names. Two, lunch and recess. Three, remote learning in case of catastrophe and shutdown. Four, how will our children retain this knowledge as opposed to just learning new things? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Next person scheduled is Beatrice Bonilla. And Jeff Bus. Our list is now complete. Is there anyone else who has a hand raised that we have not called out? Okay, there are three more people. The first one would be Nadine Bargnus. Our first is Nadine Bargnus. Are you there, Nadine? Are you on mute? Again, the little microphone. We have a red line through it. Click on that, it will unmute you. I apologize, we're going to move on. Mateika Baumgartner?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. We can.
Yes, Mateika Baumgartner. I'm a concerned parent. I have two kids that are in elementary classes with Williamsville. And one of my thoughts or recommendations would, or at least just get an update to see if the possibility of having class desk shields and the desk placed around the perimeter of the class, so the kids, especially the elementary students would have a little bit of a longer time, you know, not having the mask on all day. And the other is, is there any updates on the air filtration, air conditioning at the schools? So we can ensure the quality airflow throughout the classes?
A reminder that this is your opportunity to express your questions and concerns. We, as a board, are here to listen this evening.
Okay. Those would be my two recommendations then, would just be the use of the class shields to be put on the desks and around the perimeter, as well as updating the air conditioning throughout the school.
All right. Thank you for your comments. The next person on the list is Katie. Could you please state your name for the record, and then you may begin your comments?
Hi, this is Katie Dunlop. I was actually called, I was a scheduled speaker, but I don't know, I had my hand raised. I don't know what happened there. But anyways, Katie Dunlop, thank you so much for all your hard work. I know what an impossible situation that you are in, and I appreciate your efforts. I am a parent of two elementary school kids. My husband and I both teach at different public schools. And our districts both made it a priority on the reopening committee due to childcare issues that K-4 goes back full-time. And both of those districts that my husband and I teach at have plans to make that happen. And ironically, we live in Williamsville mostly for the schools, and I feel that kids of working parents are being hung out to dry here with this hybrid plan. If this is the way our school year starts, I hope every single day the administrators are not getting complacent, and they're actively figuring out solutions to get K-4 in daily. Please have this on your mind. We are looking at, I got quotes this week, for my two kids, $1,500 a month. And that is about a mortgage payment for us that we had no chance to plan for. Not only is this sinking us financially, but if it's all about safety, our kids are being put in a situation that is actually less safe than if they were with one group of kids the whole week. And that's not fair for anyone, now that they'll be in daycare, exposed to greater cohorts of kids. And then they're also bringing those germs back into the classroom Monday and Tuesday, of course. I just hope we didn't throw in the towel early on in the process and say, oh, we're the biggest suburban district, we can't do that. Because with our size comes more facilities to use, more staff to utilize. I know it would involve huge sacrifice and creativity, but I think that if we really make it a goal, which it needs to be, I really think it could be done. I'm really sorry to hear the comment, we didn't really go too far down that road, because some of us are absolutely desperate, like I said, to go down that road. And I don't know at what point it's going to be reevaluated. I mean, we're at the lowest percentage that we're probably going to be at, so what's the measure you're looking at to be able to get these kids back in full-time? So that is my concern going forward, and I just hope that we're actively looking for solutions as a parent who's, you know, obviously very upset about the situation. I really appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dunlop. Our list is complete? Is there someone who would have checked in as MS?
Hello, that's me.
Would you please state?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Could you please state your name?
My name, my name is Mary Shapiro. I'm a community member. I have a graduated child. However, I'm a member of the larger community. I'm wondering if the district has consulted with any actual public health consultant to ensure that this is a safe thing to do, to open schools, and to, that you have some sort of testing protocol and contact tracing, other than consulting with the Erie County Department of Health, who has said that they cannot be the tester for all schools. So who is going to pay for the testing? How is it going to be rolled out? How often will students be tested? How often will teachers and staff be tested? How are you going to ensure that this is not a danger to the entire community in opening schools? And have you thought about postponing for, you know, a certain amount of time opening and then continuing through the summer and getting your ducks in a row and possibly creating more online opportunities for 7 to 12, 12th grades, who could probably handle online better than the younger kids? Have you thought about more facilities? Have you looked into the cost of the extra buses you'll need to ensure the safety of all of our children? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. We will try one more time for Nadine Barton. And I apologize, but it's not technically coming through, so we're going to have to move on. Thank you for all of you who have presented your opinions to us. Okay, so we will continue on. Number five, consent agenda approval. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda items? Six, personnel, seven, business, and eight, special needs and student activities, as presented. Mr. McCa, Mr. Lemay, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Eight, zero. At this time, I would like to welcome the following newly appointed assistant principal to our district, Kristi Carroll, who will be at North High School as our assistant principal. So usually, we would have Ms. Carroll come to the podium and be able to express, you know, herself and introduce herself to us. But at this time, we're unable to, but I would like to extend a congratulations to her, as many of us know Ms. Carroll as she was the acting assistant principal. She was the interim, and she did a fantastic job, so congratulations to Ms. Carroll. I would like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Dawn Bro, Maple East Elementary, clerk typist for 18 years of service. Linda Siren, South High School, teacher aide for three years of service. Mary Havitt, Country Parkway Elementary Teacher for 34 years of service. And Glenda Terramasco, Transit Middle School, teacher aide for 23 years of service. So thank you all. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the July 1 organizational board meeting minutes? Mrs. Beeger, second. Dr. McLeary, any discussion? Any corrections to be made? All in favor? Unanimous? Eight, zero. Underneath the president's report, there is information in board docs regarding new teacher orientation and opening day for staff. The board had a retreat on July 15th. We met on the lawn at High Middle School. Dr. Markzoff attended along with seven out of nine board members. We discussed our board evaluation results, the work of the board agreement, and talked about how we can keep improving our board operating procedures. Next, important dates for upcoming events through Erie County Association of School Boards are listed in board docs. Is there anything additional to report under this? No? Okay. Both Mrs. Leatherbarrow and Dr. McLeary submitted reports for the law conference held last month. Dr. McLeary, do you wish to add anything? No, thank you. Please note the dates for the NISBA Board Officers Academy and NISBA Convention. We will approve the attendees at our next meeting in September. Does anyone have anything else to report under NISBA? Right? The results of our board evaluation are available to the public in board docs. As a board, we reviewed this in greater detail at our board retreat. The SUPEREVAL system, which is a state-recognized system for board evaluation, consists of five standards and 25 indicators. All seven of the returning board members participated in the reevaluation and had the opportunity to submit comments for each indicator. Does any board member wish to comment on the process or results of this? So in the interest of becoming more efficient, I will group agenda items together for board approval. Board members, please indicate the letter and number before beginning discussion on the item. So may I please have a motion to approve the following agenda items? 10E, Board of Education Purpose and Expectation for Board Visitations and Guidelines. F, Board of Education Retreat Date. G, Board of Education Community Forum Date. H, Board of Education Liaison Guidelines and Appointments. And I, Work of the Board of Education as Presented. Mrs. Beeger, first. Mrs. Kazmirak Wagner, second. Any discussion? All in favor? So we are unanimous at seven, zero. Strategic planning update. Our next meeting will be September 29th. Dr. Markzoff, anything to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next is our superintendent's report. Dr. Markzoff, would you like to give your community update?
Sure. I again want to say thank you to our reopening committee. It was really a terrific group effort. A lot of input, a lot of discussion by everyone on that committee to come up with the best plan that we could. They did a terrific job, and I think it led to a solid start in terms of our plan. I also want to thank all of our administrators, including our assistant superintendents and our principals for all of their hard work. But we have a lot more work to do to create some specific plans for each of our schools so that our students and staff are as safe as possible. But we will be working on that right up through the start of the school year. I think this concludes my community update at this time, and happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
May I please have a motion to approve and adopt the following agenda items? 11B, the 2020-2021 Annual Agenda. C, Appoint Dignity for All Students Act, District and Building Coordinators. D, District Special Education Plan. And E, District Safety Plan as Presented. Mrs. Beeger, second. Mr. Lemay, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, zero. We will now hear, or we have the discipline report. Would anyone like to go ahead and have any comments or feedback that they would like to share at this time regarding discipline report? Mrs. Beeger?
Yes, thank you for providing this discipline report. It's interesting to see what this looks like across levels, elementary, middle, high, and also between schools. My question is, for building administrators, psychologists, counselors, is there a process or protocol in which building leaders and staff, teachers as well, have the opportunity to look at this and analyze this, to set some goals? For example, I noticed one building had, you know, a high amount of tardiness. Is there a procedure in which the building looks at this and maybe sets some goals to help bring down some instances where certain instances could be lowered?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Skanzus of the WEN. He brought that report together. He talks to the administrators about it. So Mr. Skanzus, will you might come into the podium and share some information?
Sure. So to answer your question about who sees the incident reports, it's the administrators and the counselors. Teachers do not see students' discipline reports, other than those that they're submitting. And I think that they use, I think the building administrators use this information to set goals as foundational pieces to, you know, make improvements from year to year. For example, I could speak to Mill Middle School. Mill Middle School had a cohort, a couple cohorts of students who were challenging, to say the least. So two years ago in 1819, they had a high rate of out-of-school suspensions. And according to Mr. Calandra, higher than they've experienced in these years as a building principal. So you see, this year, they have a higher rate of in-school suspensions, one-day in-school suspensions. I think that that really is a spin-off or, you know, part of the plan they have in place really kind of set the tone for students to get them to not be in a position where they're going to be suspended out of school. So having said that, I think you see a spike in their in-school suspensions in this year's report. I think furthermore, taking another step further, they're looking at, kind of utilizing a mentor program. So they've identified students that they know are potential, have a potential for getting into breaking school rules and being part of the disciplinary report. And so they're working on using building staff members, kind of help mentor and work with specific kids, just check in with them and to keep them on the straight and narrow, so to speak.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Lemay?
Yeah, I wanted to thank for putting the report together. This is the second or third year that we've had this report, and it's starting to come together and give us a picture. My ask is actually more long-term, is if we can't start, as we start to accumulate these data, start putting together some trends. Maybe we could put together, as we grow this report, maybe a five-year trend, so that we can start to see patterns. Certainly, you know, if we see patterns develop, that makes something that we want to be concerned with. Certainly, you mentioned, you know, a few choice students that might be a challenge, and we might follow them through the academic system. You know, be able to see that in the trend chart and that sort of stuff. But it'll help us better, I think, understand from the board's point of view, you know, what's happening, and is this a concern? Or is it just a blip for the year?
I think the first step in condensing the number of incidental referral pieces was huge, because that was spread across the board. So condensing the number of potential referral type fractions that we have was a good first step to kind of give us some data that we can track over the next five years or through the past five years, to determine trends in certain buildings, and to potentially use that information to put plans in place that will help address specific areas of need that have challenges that a specific building is facing.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Skanzus.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to approve the following agenda items? 12A, Non-Resident Tuition Rates. B, 2020-2021 School Year Tax Warrant. And C, The Budget Transfer as Presented. Mrs. Beeger, first. Mr. Lemay, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Then unanimous, eight, zero. If you have any liaison reports, please send to Mrs. Carey. The list of meeting dates are in board docs. The PTA, PTSA President List is also in board docs for board members viewing. The PTA/PTSA president list is also in Board Docs for board members viewing. Please make contact with the PTA president and building principal of the schools you are assigned to before September 1st. Are there any legislative matters that anyone wants to discuss? Mr. Lemay?
I probably should have brought this one on NISBA. My report's already on file that I met about two weeks ago here. I don't want to give you the exact date. It was Tuesday, July 28th with Senator Schumer. The report's in Board Docs, but I did want to make the board aware that I am scheduled to have a meeting tomorrow with Senator... Hold on, I'm trying to pull this up real quick, sorry. Senator Gillibrand, and on Wednesday with Congressman Higgins. Sorry for the delay. So, just kind of as a reference, and we're talking with them, obviously, the various COVID concerns that are going on, school funding, the remote learning, the obstacles that we're hitting, you know, complexities with some of the plans that have been proposed for funding of schools, especially the two-and-a-half-day requirement to get some of the funding, that sort of stuff. So, these are ongoing discussions. NISBA has been combining at least Senator Schumer and Senator Gillibrand with the entire state, so these are very large Zoom meetings, which is not normally how we do these. We usually do these in person. There's usually about eight or 10 of us, and we get an hour with Senator. This time, I think we had about 20 minutes with Senator Schumer for about 35, 40 people. So, it was very, very condensed. However, and I know that's going to happen again tomorrow with Senator Schumer, or Gillibrand, excuse me, but Congressman Higgins, I believe that's going to be a much, much smaller crowd, so we should be able to get a little more one-on-one time length. So, I will report back next month, then Senator's points in the meantime.
Great, thank you for that update. Anyone else? May I have a motion to approve and adopt the following agenda items? 15A Textbook, Sports, and Entertainment Marketing; and B. The 2020-2021 Professional Development Plan as Presented. Mr. Bornstein first. Dr. McClary, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Mrs. Beeger, sorry?
I'd like to ask, or perhaps I need to make a motion to split those two. Do you need to abstain?
Okay, so you want to...
Those are separate. So, if I can make a motion to vote separately for meeting 15A and 15B?
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve and adopt the following agenda item? 15A Textbook, Sports, and Entertainment Marketing. First, Dr. McClary. Was that on the other side? Dr. McClary, second. Mr. Lemay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 8-0, unanimous. May I also have a motion to approve and adopt the following agenda item? The 2020-2021 Professional Development Plan as Presented. Mr. Lemay, first. Mr. Mecca, second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Right? So, that's any opposition, any abstains? Okay, so we have a 7-1, 7-0-1. Next up, there are no personnel matters to discuss. Dr. Mertzoff, will you please provide an update on district facilities?
Yeah, this time, I'll turn over to Mr. Mitter's committee. You can share some further information on this topic.
Thank you, Dr. Mertzoff. Attached in your agenda are some ongoing information regarding the current capital project that is going on, some music projects. You can see from some of the pictures that the Trans Middle School roof is completed. I will mention that the only work that's left there is really what they call the metalwork that puts around the edge of the building, so that will happen in the next four weeks. Additionally, you're seeing that there still are supplies at that site. Those are not the Trans Middle School. They will be moved in two weeks to the schools where they are to be installed, which is South High School and East High School. So, Trans Middle is complete. Our other work in the district is going on really according to plan, and in many ways, we're ahead of plan. You can see, as you came in today, North High School, the addition is up. The roof is almost on, and will be finished in about two weeks. And we should start to have some of the actual final concrete siding put on in the month of September. Other than that, the other internal work throughout the district is going on as planned. Auditorium work at South High School, East High School, and North High School, as well as High Middle School. All of that will be done and ready for the beginning of school.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under Committee of the Whole? Okay? Approximately 30 parents have sent emails regarding requests for the district reopening and/or remote learning plan. Please know, we welcome parent feedback, and we understand it's our duty to provide a space for parents to share their concerns and ideas. We also received an email requesting that we rename Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Is there any additional correspondence that anyone wants to discuss at this time? We will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules as outlined for our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board may electronically raise their hand at this time. Would someone like to make a motion to recess the regular board meeting to conduct the goal-setting work session? Mr. Bornstein, first. Mr. Lemay, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous, 8-0. Dr. Mertzoff, would you like to begin with the district goals process and continue with the 2020-2021 district goals?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Danzweiss. I'd like to just briefly review the process that we use to come up with our district goals. These come about as a result of conversations all the time between administrators, also between administrators and board members, administrators and teachers, parental input, student input, things that come to our attention as being critically important to improve our school district, which results in the formulation of our goals, which we do as a leadership team every year during our July Leadership Team Retreat. We go through our goals and put them together. And just to give you a few examples, we want to focus on attempting to complete our strategic plan this year, if possible. We also, of course, have plans and goals in there for a smooth reopening of school for September, given the global pandemic. And these are just a couple of items. Another big goal for this year is going to be related to developing the 2021-22 school budget. That will be a big challenge, given what we predict will be a lack of revenue from a number of different revenue sources that the district gets, particularly state aid. So, it's going to be a really challenging situation. But all in all, we have some very good goals. We're focused on improving student performance, as we always are. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Mrs. Beeger? I have really more of a comment than a question. You mentioned that when you formed your district goals that they come from conversations and some of the conversations that you had with the board. I was really pleased to see here some of the pieces that we brought. One in particular, improving communication, the stakeholder groups, so they're accurately informed. And I think that's a great goal. There's another goal about updating the plan for diversity in our school district, including new professional development opportunities and recruitment strategies. Those are two topics that have really come up in conversation quite a bit. So, I'm grateful for our district to hear that and set those goals, and I'm looking forward to seeing the work that comes from that throughout the school year.
Thank you.
Any other board member? Any comments? Questions? Okay, thank you. You have the board goals process and the board goals in Board Docs. Are there any concerns regarding the process? Okay? So, let's review the goals and decide if the board wants to keep, delete, or modify the goals listed. Mrs. Carey will be editing as necessary. So, our 2020-2021 Board of Education goals, we have a draft. Our first goal is Student Learning and Achievement. The Williamsville Board of Education will promote improved learning and achievement for all students by supporting appropriate policies and resources based on available research and federal and state guidance. Is everyone okay with this goal? Any comments?
Is there a question? Are we looking at the actions and measures now, or we're just doing the goals this month?
Mrs. Beeger, that's a super-great question.
My understanding is it was goals this month, and then the activities?
So, that's what we'll do, that we will just work on our goals right now. Because we will come back to this in September, and then we can go forward with our proposed actions, and then our measures and activities are how we're going to assess. Okay? So, with that, is everyone okay with our goal number one? Anything that needs to be changed? Okay? So, then our next goal that we have is Student Health and Safety. The Williamsville Board of Education will prioritize resources necessary to support the physical, mental, social, and emotional health and safety of students throughout the COVID-19 pandemic and the entire 2020-2021 school year. Is everyone in agreement? Great. Thank you. Next goal is on Board District and Community Engagement. The Williamsville Board of Education will continue to strengthen communication and relationships with the entire school community, including students, families, administrators, faculty and staff, residents, businesses, legislators, and community agencies. Any additions, additions, any change in wording? Our next goal deals with budget development and fiscal oversight. The Williamsville Board of Education will efficiently and responsibly allocate resources in alignment with district educational goals and priorities, and as needed, to address the COVID-19 pandemic and plan for the future. Any changes or additions? Right? Okay. So, that is our board goals. Those are our board goals for our 2020-2021 school year. Would someone like to make a motion? Yes?
If I could, before we close and move on to the next, I put an idea for proposing a proposal. I'd like to see if the board's interested and possibly considering. In addition to what we have for, you know, the learning, our safety and health, budget, I'd like to propose that we also have a goal around the oversight of student diversity. This is something that's come to us a bit over the last few months. And I prepared just a draft of wording to read and see if there might be interest in the board to adding this as a proposal for our school board this year. My thinking is something like, "The Williamsville Board of Education will encourage and support instructional leadership practices to embrace the diversity of all students, respecting the differences from widely diverse social, economic, cultural, linguistic, intellectual, racial, educational, and religious backgrounds to fulfill the commitment to educate all students to their maximum potential." Oh! I was reading it to y'all before, thinking we need to type it up there, but we can do that. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were typing as I was talking.
Mary, I just have a question. Did you send that? Is that in an email somewhere?
If I can cut and paste it again to you in 30 seconds, if that would be helpful. Would you like me to do that?
Did you send it prior to this? I could find it, too. Yeah, you could do that, and I can cut and paste it. That would be great. Thank you.
And Mrs. Carey?
I'm just going to stop sharing for a moment. Hold on, please.
It's Mrs. Carey. And again, this is just my thinking, so it doesn't have to stay as wording or even be goal, but it's come up in the past, and I'm not sure if it really fits as an activity as much as it being its own goal. As I noticed, it is a district goal, so it may align with the work of the district this year as well.
And I, to speak to that, Mrs. Beeger, I do think that is a necessity. We have heard this time and time again, just about making sure that we're including cultural diversity teachings within the classroom and being respectful and mindful of that. So, as a board, even though we are not directing or we don't have true involvement in that, we can still oversee or review or monitor what the district is doing in terms of providing that. So, I am in full agreement with Debbie's diversity goal.
That's for the reason that was the wording I was thinking was encourage and support. It's not necessarily our work, it's the work of the district, but it shows that we're behind that and, you know, we're looking at those activities that will take place within the district to support educating people regardless of the differences.
Mrs. Beeger, I think you did an excellent job, especially because I would have probably quit job saying that's not the role of the board to do this, but the encourage and support is definitely the role of the board. So, I like that wording, and I like your thought process on this. I fully support that. It's a beautiful expression of how we all feel anyways, and it needs to go into the dialogue.
So, with that, Dr. Mertzoff, could we please request that we do have a presentation this year that will show how we are supporting diversity and the teachings in regards to the classroom and our students?
Of course. Thank you. That might be one of the actions we put in for next month.
It's actually the annual agenda you adopted tonight. There's an opportunity to add things to it. So, if there's other presentations you want, let us know, so we can put them on the calendar. We're happy to do it. We just need a month or two, need time to organize it, put it together, and maybe have some key individuals take part in the presentation. We'll be ready to go.
So, Dr. Mertzoff, is the best thing to do to share that at the board table? Do you want that through email?
If you could share it at the board table, that would be ideal. So, that way, everyone has a chance to weigh in on it and say that that is also something they'd be interested in learning more about.
So, that's something we probably should have discussed at Committee of the Whole? Should we discuss it now, or is that something we can just, we can share?
Whatever you want, they're the school board, so...
Maybe let's finish sharing our goals.
This is the process you want to discuss that at the board.
Right, okay. Okay, so, Mrs. Beeger, would you like to actually read your goal?
Sure. "The Williamsville Board of Education will encourage and support instructional and leadership practices to embrace the diversity of all students, respecting the differences from widely diverse social, economic, cultural, linguistic, intellectual, racial, educational, and religious backgrounds to fulfill the commitment to educate all students to their maximum potential."
That's a long board goal.
And it is long.
I mean, but...
I played with that too, because I know there's some different pieces, but we've talked at the board table before about what is diversity.
And it's about supplies and details. I think it's great. I really do. Is everyone in agreement to Mrs. Beeger's? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, that, those currently are our five goals. Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to share, add another goal before we leave work session? Okay? So, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the goal-setting work session? Mr. Mecca's the first. Mr. Bornstein, second. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote, 8-0. Would someone like to make a motion to return to regular session? Would someone like to make a motion to return to regular session? Mr. Lemay, first. Mr. Viscalia, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote, eight zero. Would someone like to make a motion to adapt the 2020-2021 district goals as presented? Mr. Lemay, first. Mrs. Kuzmer, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Eight zero. Would someone like to make a motion to adapt the 2019-2020 board goals as presented? Mr. Lemay, first. Oh, yeah, that was a typo. Sorry about that. So, the 2020-2021 board goals as presented, we are adopting. Mr. McCaffrey, first. Was there a second? Mr. Lemay. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote, eight zero. So, at this time, if there is anyone that, because we've already discussed this, and I did ask you to think about it, is, would anyone like to share with Dr. Markslaw any presentations of information you would like presented this year during a board meeting? Mr. McCaffrey?
This is not necessarily a recommendation of information that I'd like to see presented, but I always enjoy seeing student physical performances as we've had from time to time in the board room. So, that'd be my suggestion.
Mrs. Beeger?
We've touched on this already, but as we get into this, I guess I'll formally ask Carey. As we get into the school year, I'd really like to see a presentation around what our online instruction is looking like. If we can not just see a list or presentations, but actually some examples, not to put teachers on the spot, per se, but I think it's always helpful when you can actually see what it looks like, rather than just being told, oh, we're using Google Classroom. What does that look like? And also, you know, how are kids responding to that? What kind of goals are we seeing as a result? So, does our online instruction, as we get into it in the next couple of months?
Mr. Lemay?
That's very similar request. I was actually going to say is I'd like to see, you know, a day in the life of a student via the hybrid model. I'd like to see a day or a week in the life, so to speak. And I'd like to physically actually see what that looks like when they're in the virtual. What's, what does the Google platform, how does it look? How does the meetings work? How do kids interact with teachers? How are our presentate? All of that sort of stuff.
Anyone else? I do have one request myself. I would like to go back and receive more information and follow up with secondary math. We were diving into that, and we did have some presentations, and then we kind of were on hold with everything that happened. I don't think as a board, we were willing to just let it go. So, I would like to circle back and continue with secondary math. Anyone else? Our next scheduled board meeting is September 8th. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Lemay, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, eight zero. Thank you. Stay safe and be well.